So.
So.
I'm going out.
We did.
You believe in.
They're here.
Um.
You.
But here.
No, that's not where you're going to uh.
They went out there.
When the.
The.
Well.
They will.
So you think you can't mean when you write something about us?
Yes.
I'm going to actually.
Well, kind of.
Yeah, that's.
It's not good.
So.
I'm sure.
But it's.
And we weren't.
No.
Oh, that was Ann. Remember that? That was me, but it's. Let her know the call. Okay.
Well.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah.
Well.
Well.
This is one we got heard of.
Thank you, Amelia. Yes.
Okay.
That's for the discussion at the end. Depending what they decide to do.
It's your story.
Kelly said if we could just let her know like we're going to.
Yeah, she told me.
I'm.
Right now.
Oh, we're wrong.
They call.
Good.
So.
Always.
Chris.
How funny.
Oh, I don't think I drink.
You.
I.
Good.
Morning.
Yeah.
You want to work on that small.
Yeah.
Don't.
Yeah.
Oh, the.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a moment.
And uh.
I know.
Come back while I was on.
Like.
Feeling like. Is that okay or?
What's?
This.
The.
I could ask.
The new arrival that's in.
Her face.
Oh.
That.
Wow. Does that depict?
Because we are that much more effective in helping our families. But we also want to be good stewards of the dollars, so it makes no sense to collect. When we have a cash balance where we can help the families, even if we had two or three significant requests for funding. Yeah, this is the first time in my ten years that we've. Juggernaut County JFS, we are the fiscal agent of. Family First Council, this is the first time in ten years that this has ever happened. But as this board is well aware, whether it's come to our levy or whether in this situation. We're not going to ask for funding if we don't need it. That's the way things should be done. And so with that being said, we as. The fiscal team for. Family First, we sat down and said, all right, well, you know, we have this cash carryover and so. You know, we want to make sure that when we do come to the board. And are asking for funding that we can back it up and say that we we need it and we're very grateful and. As. You guys know, that's the way that it's been, but here we are saying, and I guess. It's I guess it's a good problem to have. To be able to say that at this point, we don't need it and we want to say thank you so much for your. Generous contributions to council and to the community. But right now we can handle what we have. So that when we do come and we ask for it, that you guys know that we. We need it, so. Tim's done a phenomenal job and his his team's done a phenomenal job, we we are scratching our heads. His office is right next to mine and we are trying to philosophize over, you know, what's going on in the county and why or not. We are not getting as many referrals as. We are are used to, I mean, I've gone back ten years. Over my tenure to look at, why aren't we not getting as many phone calls? It is odd, it's strange, it's kind of. Scary when you're like, okay, what's going on out there? Is there going to be a windfall or? You know, what's happening? I'm having some people do some research to to look into or and making sure that we're talking to the schools and. What have you, because especially coming out of COVID, we thought that. We were going to get a plethora of referrals because people weren't seeing each other and. You know, they were doing counseling over Zoom or whatever, you know, whatever, and we thought that. Once everything was back live in person that, you know, we'd have the floodgates of calls would come in. But we really did not see that, and that's what the rest of the state has seen. Significant increases in in both families where where custody has been relinquished to to children's services in the different counties. Increases to Ohio rise bed days increases to family first bed days, so. You have, yeah, and you have a lot of counties that you have kids that are sleeping in their JFS buildings. That is actually a reality. Cuyahoga and I know a number of other people in their lobbies. Kids are sleeping in their lobbies and. You know, thanks, I mean, thank God we didn't walk past a bunch of kids this morning into the building and sleep in their life, but it's happening and. Thankfully, it's again not happening here, but we. Tim and I in our kind of ways, we we just ask the questions like, why? Why are we different? Are we missing something or are we just blessed? So. We'll we'll keep our ears to the ground and keep looking at it, but with that being said, we. You know, are gonna. Just ask the the board to keep us in mind next time we come around, but we do not need to collect this time.
Make the motion.
You get to escape now. They'll beat me up.
Thank you.
I am not dismissed. Do I have to reintroduce myself? Yeah, so so many and then change personalities or anything like that.
Item fourteen.
Yes.
Take it away.
Good morning, thank you so much. I am here very grateful to discuss. The options regarding the location of the new Juggernaut County Youth Center. As you guys know, and the Maple Leafs did a great job in the article in the paper. But I had individual discussions with each with each and every one of you. Regarding the prospective locations of the youth center. Very grateful for your time and those discussions. It seemed like at that point in time, we. Did come to kind of a meeting of the minds as to. The best location, but I just wanted to. I don't know if the board wanted to kind of talk through publicly the different options that we had for the youth center. I made sure I sent to Christie the attached documents that I had shown you. With respect to the youth center. And very excited to get this project continued to move forward. Do you want me to talk?
Just briefly, yeah.
The first option, as you guys are well aware, and at. A certain point, I thought it was really kind of the only option was on the existing property where the current. Youth Center is, but down the ravine. There, we were looking down the ravine. And. There were some concerns with. That option because there were two. Neighboring residential homes that were. In proximity that could have have observed. This property, there were also some. Expenses. With moving a lot of dirt that needed to be moved to make this lot fit plus a long drive. That would have to go into it, that particular site was just to get the site ready. Was looking to be over a million dollars just to even get the site. Itself ready, plus the concerns with the neighbors. And I know I spoke with the neighbors, I believe Commissioner DeWorack, you as well.
And then we, I sit on the committee. With Craig, he received a letter from Clarton Township.
That is correct.
You know, representing those two families that would live.
They went to all the committees.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that was one option, yes, that is commissioner on property, it was an option. But you know, as with any project. You have concerns, issues, things you have to weigh. So with Commissioner DeVorec on the committee that we've been meeting, we then looked kind of across the street. On Aquila Road next to the current county home. With that site, again, we had then designed, drawn some plans for that site. There are no trees, so the good thing with that project that there was not going to be significant tree removal. However, due to kind of the the existing grade. Of that property and where the the building would have to be placed, would have to be again fairly. Far setback to get to. Somewhat flat land, also have to be a lot of kind of dirt removal, grading. Long drive down to get to that property. And that property also with getting utilities and stuff there just for. The site preparation was also in the neighborhood, if not exceeding a million dollars as well. Just to get the land ready, the property ready.
I thought that one was less expensive, that's not correct, okay.
Just because there was concerns in getting. Sewer sewer extension, I think, electric to that property. There were very similar costs with site preparation for that one across the. Not across the street from here, but across the street.
Right, I thought that one was slightly less.
Maybe maybe slightly, but it was.
Like an eight hundred-ish versus a million-ish.
Did not, did not, but the eight hundred did not include getting utilities.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. And then the last site that we discussed. Was across the street, not necessarily across the street from here, but across the street from the current library. On Ravenwood Drive. I know the commissioner's owned, I believe, four parcels. Along Ravenwood Drive that are going to, would that be to east? Yeah, to east of the hospital, going, yeah, and this would be the third parcel. Across, like I said, across from what would also be Merit. And then also towards Aquila. That property came at a significant discount or fairly significant discount, looking at about. Four to five hundred thousand plus some getting utilities there, but about a half a million dollar. Less cost to do that site there. Again, we discuss, with each individually, one of you guys discussed that option. Seemed to be the most cost effective. Also, no tree removal. Utilities are fairly. Nothing's easy, but available to that to that site.
Very accessible.
And it seemed, again, with your expertise, Commissioner DeVorec. Just with having been in those discussions, you've heard everything that everyone's had to say, the experts. I'm just a layperson, listening to all the knowledge that you guys have, but it seemed like that. Appeared to be the best option from our discussions. And with that being said, I wanted to have an open discussion and then. Get your guys' blessing to move forward with that site if you guys so agree.
Yeah, basically across the street from the Library Administration Building.
Yes, sir.
And. It's it's the most economical and. The most level land and no trees to remove and utilities very accessible, so. That's that's why I like it.
So the lot that's at Quilla and Ravenwood, is that? That's not an option?
It has a big gully down the middle of it? That's.
Very, very, very. I'm sorry, that that the grade on that, it's it's a pretty significant hill. It's not something that it would be enabled this type of construction to exist on.
And there's kind of a drainage ditch on an angle going through that last property.
We did, but to Commissioner, to your question, we did look at it. I don't want you to think that we didn't even like.
Yeah, well, that's what I was.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I just want to, again, thank you guys for your openness, your time and consideration, as you guys know. Very, this is. A huge, important project for the the county and for our kids and for. JFS and and just for the community and. It's been a long time coming and we've had so many gyrations through it and to. Get this project, continue to keep it moving is is huge and I just can't wait to see it to come to fruition.
Can we talk about the grant process and how this change will impact the grant?
We have to start all over again.
Okay.
I have talked to Kelly Glover in Columbus, she has given us an extension to February twenty eighth. We have to assemble all the documentation again. The flood plan, the zoning, there's a question about whether this building meets the zoning in that parcel, so we would have to be talking to, once again, the. Effective township for that. But again, we have till the twenty eighth of February to redo the grant.
That's not that long, Linda.
I'm aware.
So are we going to have to engage Ravenwood again? To to help us. Get that together like they did the first time? I know you weren't part of that.
I know, I'll do it.
Okay. Where?
I've already done quite a bit of it in. In case this is what happens, so. It'll just be a matter of wrapping it up, I already have a scheduled call with Kelly this afternoon. To update her on whatever the choice the board makes and then to make sure that I have everything together. So we can get that process back on track.
And they'll have to come back up here to take a site visit, I assume?
I'm assuming, and then the question will still remain, will the prosecutor's office approve the mortgage that would be attached to that grant? Because that's what the document is called.
Right, even though it was forgivable.
Yes. It's forgiven automatically, one, two hundred forty, and every month for twenty years, provided we continue to provide the service.
Which again, is what the building is fully intended for.
Don't expect that we would ever not do that, and we do not have a reporting requirement, it is supposed to be monitored by actually, Geothermal Health.
Yeah, and the building, just like the current existing youth center, has got an Omas. Approval certificate. To establish what it is and. This building will far more exceed the current building as far as Omas, meaning all Omas. Rules, regulations, requirements.
Omas means what?
Ohio, sorry, I speak in acronyms, Ohio Mental Health and Addiction Services.
Got it.
Sorry.
Okay, so we can talk about that, should the board decide to change the location? All the documentation for the grant has to be.
Whatever help I can be, please, you know to lean on me, so.
Well, you'd like a motion?
Yes, sir.
For that lot?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion for the building lot across the street from the. Library Administration Building.
Thank you so much.
A second.
Yes. Thank you guys so much for your support, I appreciate it.
I can do item number fifteen if you'd like.
Go ahead.
This has to do with putting wayfinding signage all around this campus. We've been working on it for quite some time with NV Five, who was the building owner's rep for the construction of this building. And with Brilliant Sign Company. And what we got back from Munson Township was a form that would authorize. Brilliant Sign to represent you to ask for a variance for the signs because the signs we want to put up do not meet. Munson zoning. But we need them to be as large as they are so people can actually find their way around to all of our buildings. So. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize. President of the Board to execute the Munson Township Letter of Authorization and Representation. Or John Benedict from Brilliant Sign Company to act as the designated agent regarding a variance request. Before the Munson Township Board of Zoning Appeals to Erect Wayfinding Signage and Relief from Paying a Zoning Fee.
Are we paying? This Mr. Benedict, an additional fee to represent us?
No.
This is just part of.
It's just part of. Getting the signs.
Okay.
They're, they do this. All the time.
All right, very good, I'll make a motion to approve.
Hi.
Mr. Brady. Hi.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
I can do item sixteen if you like.
Please.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the request for partial payment. Number sixteen. Or Infinity Construction Company Incorporated for the Geogga County Courthouse Expansion. GMP Phase One and Phase Two expenses in the amount of. Five hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and eight cents.
So we're looking at just north of two million right now for the whole project, is that correct?
You mean so far?
Yes.
Oh, I think it's more than.
I'm sorry, twenty million, I dropped a zero.
We're still sitting at a little more than twenty million. Every time there's a change order, I'm bringing it to you and you are making those decisions, so.
Make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Can Christie do the next two as she is working on this? Is that okay?
Okay, so then next two. While they seem to be a little confusing, the language in them is to rescind the original. Resolution that was done twenty-four, two oh three, where we established the new fund.
Specifically for this project in this second resolution.
Or it would stay in the account for fair board allocation.
For future projects.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That they would have to come to you to approve, so.
Understood.
The total estimate on the project is seven hundred ninety-two thousand, so it's higher than what.
That's right.
Appropriating, and my understanding is they are paying the difference on the project.
So it's, it will likely wipe out the fund in all words.
Yes.
Yeah, very good. I'll make the motion to approve. Those next, there's two, right?
Seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen, eighteen.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
These next three are probably Christie's as well.
Christie, you're almost done with this credit card stuff.
Next year.
Credit card stuff, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
Do we do this every year?
All year long, it just keeps going.
That's what it seems like, it's like six months of credit card approvals.
The process this year has been completely differing with the new policy.
Okay.
So it has kind of been a learning curve for all of us. And typically, we would have gotten. Stuff out well in advance to get certain things in place to be ready to go with all of them in January and then just put a few stragglers here and there. But with the complete change in the policy and how we have to do all of these certain steps, now the. Departments have gotten their stuff in, so we're kind of like.
Working to an end.
Peace mails. Yes, so number nineteen is to. Second amended resolution approving the use of county credit cards for the year twenty twenty-five. For agencies and cardholders pursuant to three oh one two seven, which includes now adding the building department. The Commonwealth Police Court, because they were, they received their new cards. For the department and for an increase to the Department on Aging sent here account monthly limit. They added another driver, more aggressive gas, they're just asking for an increase, so that is number nineteen.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller. Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Number twenty then is to authorize the president of the board to execute the application for the use of county credit cards. Credit cards for the building department and the Commonwealth Police Court for the year twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Number twenty-one then is to approve and execute the certification request, the county auditor request the to board of commissioners for the quarterly news. Of county credit cards pursuant to the ORC three oh one point two seven for the year twenty twenty-five. The building department did all four of their quarters and the propane unit of course only submitted quarter one.
So I mean, we have to do it again?
Every quarter.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Yes.
And then the next one is the amendments that we need to make to. The Turk Council, which is the taxing center review council for the village of Middlefield's CRA zone that they created.
I want to appoint Gina Hofstadter.
H Commissioner.
Pick one.
Well, you have.
Okay.
You have to appoint three people.
Total.
Total to sit on that board as together as a board. It's different from your CRAs where in your Turk where you had to do it individually as an individual commissioner. The direction I got from Laura is it's different because it's not our CRA, we weren't part of it. That you, as a board collectively, have to appoint three people to this Turk.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any other ones they want to appoint?
I communicated with Matt Smith last night, he said he would let us know before the end of the week, before next meeting.
Do you want to just table this till next week then? Do you have to, when is this due?
The meeting is tomorrow, we've we've pushed this out as far as we can go, the meeting is actually tomorrow. At the others office. So we have to do this today. I'm sure he would do.
Put down Matt Smith and I'll talk to him this afternoon. Because he seemed interested, he just didn't want more.
Okay, so Gina, Matt, and anyone else?
I don't know, could we appoint Adrian from our office to the other?
Sure.
Do you want to? Be involved in that?
I can if you need me to be.
Sure. Just saying, just based on some of your experience and background, it would be. Probably in your real house, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board appoint Gina Hofstadter, Matt Smith, and Adrian Gordon to the Tax and Center Review Committee for the Village of Middlefield. Newly created CRA zone for a three-year term ending December three verse twenty-two.
And I think they meet once or twice a year.
Yeah, I think it's a small commitment. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Yes.
The next two are your statements. For your alternate position, start planning.
Yeah, item twenty-three. I want to appoint Dave Fabik to serve as my alternate for the Juggernaut County Planning Commission for the year twenty twenty-five. He comes in with a lot of experience, he's on the Blueberry zoning. Committee as well, so he knows. He knows both planning and things like that.
There's no role in that, it's just a statement.
Twenty-four, Mr. Brady wants Dane Davis to serve as her alternate, the planning commission for the year twenty twenty-five.
Also, Jim, I was able to get ahold of Skip this morning, he would be my alternate, Skip Claypool.
We'll add that one in line.
Linda know about all. This time, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session. For the purpose of discussing the employment and compensation of a public employee pursuant to ORC one twenty-one. Point twenty-two G one.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Spiller.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Do you have all the signatures you need?
No. Okay, they're they're still, they're still signing. Okay, have to wait till they come out.
Okay. I gotta run and get Kathy.
Should we announce who we're going in?
Yeah, that's yeah.
Going in at ten fifteen.
So.
We got our executive session at ten forty-nine, no action?
So for board discussion today, you remember last week we talked about the change order request for the courthouse for there to be showers in the basement? And you guys asked for more information about that. When I went to the courthouse construction meeting on Thursday, Randy Taylor from the courthouse had an alternate option that he had run past the judges and the judges agreed with that is much less expensive. There's still a shower, but they they'll just be using one of the two bathrooms in the basement as a unisex shower and the other bathroom as a unisex bathroom. So it involves no cutting of the floor or no loss of space in the janitor's space or movement of the janitor's slop sink. So it's a I'm sorry, I don't have a number yet, but we anticipate probably around ten thousand or so for this alternate solution. It is still a change order. It is still an increase, but it's a much less than thirty-two thousand dollars, which is what we had last week. So I don't know how you feel about that. I'm just determined that as these change orders come that you are aware, so you have time to think about it. You probably don't have to make a decision today if you don't want to, but if you want to let me know how you feel about it at some point, and I let you know once I have a real solid number.
That's yeah, I want to see a number. I mean, when it was thirty-two thousand to me, that was an obvious no, at least for me. But I guess we'll see what a real number is.
Okay.
Yeah, every Tuesday at one o'clock, Glenn and I view the courthouse. And when we had a meeting of the minds with the judges and everything else, we come up with with this, one restroom, a room and one room for shower. So anxious to get.
And that's.
A number.
This drawing represents.
Yes.
The other change order that came up this past week had to do with the court IT. It was explained to me that there will be three IT closets, one on each floor, and that they are daisy chained together. And so the court IT people had a consultant who recommended that there be an extra line that went from the top to the bottom for redundancy. And the cost to that is about nine thousand dollars. So I can get more information about that if you need it. They showed me a drawing, but.
Yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so.
Okay.
I have to.
Right. So we'll get more information about that again, the. Their consultant thought that that was a good idea.
Yeah, it's just is it a ten thousand dollar good idea?
Okay. The other item that we have for discussion today is, you know, we talked last week about the one point three three million dollars that you guys decided to give to the airport in December and how that could work. And at the end of the discussion, Commissioner DeVorex said he would go and negotiate again with the airport authority to come up with a solution about that. And so what I've given you that looks like this is my understanding of what they talked about. And I know I gave that to you as President Hattner's on Friday, so hopefully you had a chance to kind of think about it, whether that's something that you are supportive of or not. It involves that the commissioners sign an agreement to build a teehanger and puts the one point three three million into the airport construction fund, which is controlled by the commissioners. The commissioners manages the bid process. Obviously, they would do the documents, but we would manage the process. And the airport would select the contractor. The bills would come to our office to be paid and we would provide prevailing wage coordination until about the beginning of October, when the FAA money comes through, which is somewhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars, by my understanding. At that point, the bills would be paid from the FAA money by the airport. And the money remaining in the airport construction fund would stay there and be available to be drawn by the airport authority as needed for the other projects that they want to do. That's my understanding of what was negotiated is that your understanding of what was negotiated. So it's just. Originally, it was just you were going to give them one point three three million dollars.
Yeah, it's more structured this way, and I'm comfortable with with this.
And then this would involve an agreement that the prosecutor would have to approve before it could be put into place.
Rob, you go with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as they get the one point three, and then when they get the. Yes, they can utilize that for their future projects. With no repayment back.
There would be no repayment.
Right.
So do you want to make a motion to that effect? Or do you want to see an agreement first? How do you?
I'll make a motion for the process to keep going.
Okay.
Once the.
All right, we don't need a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I did actually draft something yesterday based on something that Laura had given us from before.
Okay.
That I can send to them as a starting place. Obviously, I'm not an attorney, Commissioner, if you want to look at it before I send it. No, but she'll she'll make it say what they wanted to say, and then we'll see how that goes. So, okay.
Proceed.
Okay. That's all I have for discussion this week.
Good. Anything else you would present?
Yeah, just that you have your Georgia travel solace management district meeting today at two. Johnson pack out stuff, it's fairly large agenda, but we haven't had a meeting in a while, so.
Now we'll move into public comment. Does anybody have a public comment they'd like to? Go ahead, state your name.
Yep, Gail Roossey, Lickup Women Voters, also a Geogee County resident. So the planning commission, and I have attended those meetings, they never had an alternate for the commissioners. The commissioners were either there or not. But this today, I noticed that everyone has an alternate. Why is this happening? And to explain that?
We've always had the right to have an alternate. And today we chose to go in that direction.
Anastasia Nicholas, Sugar Valley Times, why have you decided to go in that direction? Like, what was the initiator that?
Well, with me personally, since I'm getting on more committees than I said on the Georgia Youth Center building project, it just cleared off my plate a little bit. And I chose someone that has experience on the planning. It's important. And I didn't want to pick somebody that that didn't fit in, but he has experience with the zoning. He knows a lot about it. So I think it's a plus. But he has experience with the zoning. He knows a lot about it. So I think it's a plus. Go ahead, sir.
What an alternate had, excuse me.
State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe Autumn from Muncie Township. And my question is your alternate, would they have the same voting authority that that you told?
Yes. Motion, Mr. Trump.
So moved.
All in big words.
Look at things to sign up.
Yeah, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you tell me a bit about your alternate that you?
Yeah, Dave Dave Faber lives in Newberry. Zoning committee for years, very experienced. With the Dog County planning.
Could you tell me about your alternate, Carol?
Yeah, give me one second. Hi, I'm James Davis. He is a young professional family man who lives in Baybridge Township.
Who is there?
I'm not sure exactly what his title is. I can give you contact information if you want to reach out.
Sure, thanks.
Better bio than I can.
Sure.
Alright, three three oh, seven one nine, five one, seven eight.
Do you expect that you'll have to use the alternate?
I mean, it's, you know, it's a it's a tough time for me. It's seven thirty in the morning. I said, well, we need to get like, nobody asks us when they, you know, just tell us when they are. So for me, and like, as Mr. Flores says, we only have so many hours a day, so you kind of just have to prioritize where you're going. Yeah, yeah, we're all we're all
Thank you.
This is breaking one of the second, if you don't mind. Dean Hing, First Energy. I'm not soliciting anything. I just wanted to introduce myself.
Well, do you know my name then?
Carolyn Breaky.
Yes.
I've got you in my contacts, so feel free to put.
No, I just, I mean, your company.
No, no. Okay, I recognize the name. Green Falls, area?
Yeah.
Okay, Breaky Energy. I've heard of that. Not real familiar, but I served as a liaison for county government, Georgia County, local government Georgia County and East District. So any concerns you have, First Energy.
Commissioner Breaky, my name is Greg Gilstrich.
No, no. Meet with you on Thursday.
Okay. Okay.
Chip Pass.
Putting together the information you requested to.
Yeah, we'll get it hopefully. Full of business time. I mean, when's the Chicago ready time? Yeah. Looking forward to it.
Alright, great, thank you. Yeah, we don't need. Yeah, let me, I'll just give you my. I should keep my business cards here. People are, I just, you know, I didn't think about it. Thank you, thanks for coming.
That's your first name, Paul, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's my first. That's where you told me about.
Yeah, there you go. That's one of my favorite topics.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, okay.
That's okay. Thanks. Nice to meet you. Pleasure to meet you.
No, I'm an honorary, but I actually can't know her. It's really when you're an attorney, you don't have to take a test or anything. You have a teacher. Which is kind of stupid, like, I don't really know. She's an attorney. Yeah, you just file all of this paperwork. She gave her stamp done.
Sounds like, okay, so.
Yeah, there's no test. There's none. No, I wouldn't say it was someone that came up.
Oh, that's Anastasia.
Oh, yeah, because the saying stop just shot recording. Let's see if she's in the holics. Yeah, luckily that was a very boring conversation. So how are you? How are you feeling about that?
Doing good. I mean, it was, I mean, not as good as I thought. My dad is like a much more milestone, so they don't, they give it a couple months left. So you know, the talk, two words I got, I got to. Been talking with Sunday. I was like, but the time I laughed, I'm glad in that Josh trade show, he couldn't talk. And then a week later, my sister, he had the bowel surgery. He like, he just be standing, he'll just start falling back. He did the catch up. And I said, that's a huge milestone. I'm like, oh, your brain is literally.
Getting through.
Totally different than hospice was there.
I feel like a referee or.
Yeah, you don't have six months. The muscles start contracting, so watch that.
Alright.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, if some of those students are finding.
Hey, Dean, before you go, I want to talk.
Every time we talked, hospice, like, that should have taken three months. It took me two days. Like, that should have been two months. It took a whole week. So. No, I told my sister. I was talking, my sister was like five or six AM. It's much just, we're talking about his throat contracting and I said, I'm sad, I said, I don't want to see him in the house, I said, but probably the answer to all the prayers we've had of wanting to go out with her. He's not, he's a shell of a person, you know, yeah. He doesn't know what's going on. He talks all day long. He would not want to be what he is now. Like, he would not be here. So it's probably a month or two, he's probably going. It's my sister's trying to grab. She can work her motor twenty-four seven, so she's trying to grab. She can stay here for a month again with my mom after the castings. And he tries, I said, we'll lose her if we don't find her. She just, she's in bad health and then she's a, she's like, oh, if she could, I think. If it wasn't for her drawing him out, him drawing her out, she'd drive to the house and you can't tell her that. She's got exercise.
You have to keep an eye on her too.
Oh, yeah. That's why we got hospice involved. Finally, she doesn't want to, but finally convinced her hospice. Helping her out, like, maybe three days a week right now. And then once he goes into the the bedpan stage, it's like five days a week or six days, something like that. It's every day, but like, it's one day less than one day. So we're looking at that. We're trying to get her foot met on the silver down just for her own mental health as well, but she didn't want to do it. And then they had six months. And she's like, I was like, I get it, I get it. I get it, so, you know. He doesn't, and he, you can tell at times, like, I can give him a hug, or he just looks at me and he's shaking my hand. Yeah, then he'll finally give you a hug, he'll laugh, but you can tell there's times she has no reason to there or who's around or why they're here. And he can't.
She already from last, I watched her pull out.
I said, I don't like it.
But I laughed at Deputy downstairs at the front desk. And she realized that it comes fast.
She sat in the one way, and I blew out for him, smiling, laughing. And that was, that was personal. And that's when we started realizing. Yeah. Tried to eat, so it's, it's just sad. Let me just see what we was. Five years goes now, it's sad. But yeah, so that's been, I think two weeks ago, I wasn't here. I was at the hospital. I was just about, and I was there with her. And then and last was that two weeks ago. So yeah, it's now just a matter of time. I don't know where I just, I had a joke they told me.
We had everything done and stuff.
Yeah, we need DNR. I don't know if it was. Fully buried. I want information. I don't want DNR, please. Like, now, still like, that's probably the worst possible thing. You know, he's a vegetarian, more or less.
But it's a.
I don't know.
The right reason.
Yes, I told my sister, you know, usually doing something. It's also not the scene. It's his mother's. She's alive. You know, that's hard nights. She was, she's, my grandmother, she gets around, you'd think she's probably seventy. I mean, like, face, you never know. And yeah, she's, yeah, well, you know, she, she stays with her, she galls and every Thursday, she's walking my aunt. Super, super. Every time I try to say, God, I forgot to walk, gotta move. My grandmother and my grandfather, my mom's side, both of them. I don't know. Two shots today. Look, we go with your, the whole ball balance. Lynn and I were saying, we get our gray hairs from work. They're not really from life. I wish I could say that. I was, my kids, my kids, every night they're like, your gray hair is getting worse. I said, no, it's because of us, please. Not because of you guys. It's because of work. Not you guys. We got a Grover Rock, so she matched with us.
Oh, he's would love that.
We did a rock match. My youngest did a rock match, but he loved it. So he was, he was a little workforce. Climbing, we were climbing, it's down Southern Ohio, the Appalachian, climbing mountains, three and a half mile height, like six stages of shooting. And he just, ten years old, he was a trooper, so. So, buddy, not too bad by yourself.
Long time.
Long time.
You're gonna be fishing with me, right?
I am. I better be. How you been? Alright, I'll see you later, Carolyn. How are you doing?